It is starting up there and now it's starting.
All right, good. Seven o'clock, let's get started. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting of 21 July 2021. For those new to our meetings, I'm David Collingwood, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I'm joined by fellow supervisor, Mr. Jim Miller, the Vice Chair, and member, Mr. Jay Kaiser. I'll call tonight's meeting to order with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a few housekeeping items. This meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded. At its conclusion, Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. A link to the meeting can be found on the township's website at www.westrockhilltownship.org. I'd like to remind everyone that we are following the West Rock Hill Township policies for public meetings and the rules that apply as listed on Page Two of the meeting agenda. Please silence cell phones and mute your computers until you wish to speak. Are there any public comments on agenda items as listed? If so, please state your name and address.
Hello, this is Cliff Cole at 2440 Shoe Craft Road.
Hello, good evening.
I noticed that there's nothing about Adelphia on the agenda again. And since it's been such a busy time with the court case and activity, I was wondering if one of the supervisors or the solicitor might be so kind to explain some of this activity that's been happening in the suit?
I'll update everybody under the solicitors report if that's all right with the Chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Announcements. The Board of Supervisors will have an executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss legal and real estate matters. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. That includes July, excuse me, June 16th, 2021, meeting minutes, the wind review, plan review status, escrow, release, and vouchers, the emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, the treasures report, and payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott, would you please read the treasurer's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go over the treasurer's report for June 30th, 2021. The general fund balance, $1,207,159.60. Highway aid, $247,733.94. Open space, $1,154,366.34. The park fund, $31,267.46. The equipment fund, $32,501.58. Highway capital, $129.68. Street light, $37,808.80. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $396,254. Open space manor field, $51,377.48. Sewerage maintenance fund, $182,563.24. The stormwater fund, $8,822.93. And the escrow funds, $2375,417.45.
Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. Are there any comments or questions by the Board of Supervisors on the consent agenda?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
And a second. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We now move on to confirmed appointments. According to my information, Solicitor Edwards should be here representing TH Properties.
Yes, I am. My name is Carolyn Edwards. I'm representing TH Properties. We're going to start out with a brief background.
Solicitor, just one thing. You have five minutes.
Thank you. We're going to start off with a brief background by Mr. Eric, the engineer, and then I'll just go on with the request that we have.
Thank you.
Hello. TH Properties proposes to develop this 16.7 acre site under the township's IS Institutional Services zoning, utilizing use B-10, which is age qualified community. This proposed use is a use permitted by right under the ordinance. The site previously contained a precision finishing incorporated facility. The maximum density is 5.6 dwelling units per acre. Seventy-three townhouse units are proposed. Preliminary plans were submitted and reviewed by the township engineer and the Bucks County Planning Commission. The property is located behind the Stone Ridge Professional Center and adjacent to the Hidden Meadows Apartment and Dementia Buildings and backs up to Greenview Hospital. The development is accessed via two points on Hidden Meadows Drive as well as an emergency access out to Long Avenue. The 73 units are proposed in clusters of three to six units. Each unit will have a two-car garage with driveway for two cars each. In addition, 75 additional parking spaces are proposed throughout the development. This will be a very walkable community with sidewalk proposed along all drives. An additional half mile of macadam pathways and trodden footpaths proposed for recreation. Over seven and a half acres of open space are proposed. Stormwater will be managed via series, onsite via a series of above and below ground basins. Community is proposed to be served by public sewage disposal via Sellersville Borough Facilities and public water via North Penn Water Authority. Caroline?
Thank you. The plans were before the planning commission on sketch plan last year, and they did not have any comments regarding changing the layout. So the layout that is in the preliminary plans is the layout that was seen by the planning commission. The township engineer issued a review letter on April 7th, 2021, and noted two items that we are going to need to go to the zoning hearing board on potentially. One is the requirement for a right-of-way. This project, it proposes private streets, which is a requirement of the use B-10. But the township engineer's position is that this still requires a right-of-way of 52 feet. Along with that goes a setback requirement of 35 feet. We have two possible approaches of going to the zoning hearing board. One is providing the full right-of-way width of 52 feet and a more significant variance from the setback requirement. The second is to request a variance from the right-of-way requirement to allow the right-of-way to be consistent with the cartway and to provide, and then the variance from the setback would not be as significant. The reason we're before this board is to see if there is a preference for one or the other. If we go with the lesser setback consistent with the cartway, it's our belief that we would require a waiver from the Board of Supervisors in addition to the zoning hearing board variance. So that is why we're before the board. If you have a preference of one or the other approach, we would like to know that before we go to the zoning hearing board. Mr. Eric prepared some plans that were submitted. I'm not sure if you've seen those, but if we could show those, it shows the two alternatives. What is going to come, what's going to be visible once the project is built will be no different with either approach. You know, on the ground, it's going to be exactly the same. It's really a matter of how the ordinances are applied. And do we have a copy of that plan?
Solicitor, I think we've all, oh, you have it here because that was included on our packets. We've seen that.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure. So that's really why we're before you, to see which of these two alternatives would be preferable to the board. The right-of-way of 52 feet would not require any variance from the right-of-way, but it would require a variance from the setback to allow a setback of 17 feet. If we went with the second alternative, the right-of-way would be equal to the cartway, which is 28 feet in width. So we'd be requesting a variance from the right-of-way width to allow a right-of-way of 28 feet and a variance from the setback to allow a setback of 28 feet from the right-of-way line, which would be a variance of seven feet from the 35-foot requirement. And that second alternative, as I mentioned, would also require a waiver from the board at the time we're before you on preliminary plans.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking at your application for the confirmed appointment, and I specifically see you've asked two questions, which you've clearly talked about this evening. I'm going to open it up to the, for questions and comments by the other members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Kaiser and Mr. Miller.
Okay, you want me to go first?
Certainly, yes.
Yes, I don't. I, as you, some of you are aware, when these, when these ordinance were put in place, I sat on a planning commission and and one of the issues we had with setbacks was there wasn't enough space between the garage and the street to park full-size trucks. Okay, so if someone had a pickup truck that had an eight-foot bed and full four doors, you were, you were, your truck was on the sidewalk and people could not pass through. They had to go in the street to go around it. That was one of the reasons why we extended and moved the setback back so that there'd be more room for safety because we all know, and I'm not saying that there'll be kids in these particular homes because I believe you've said they are age restricted.
That's correct.
But if they did have, if they did have visitors, if they had grandchildren, visitors or something, and they had their bike there and they parked their bike in front of the garage, and then somebody came home with a full-size pickup or suburban, you know, or one of those big excursions, there would not be enough room. So I, to be quite honest with you, I'm not interested in changing or granting a variance or a waiver on setbacks on these plans. I believe that you're probably trying to do it so you can, so you can have more units available. You can put more units in. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, the site itself is constrained by the configuration and the location of the road. So that really dictates how the, the roads are configured, how the unit, unit design is set.
The other, the second part of my concern and my, my position is, of course, for snow removal and emergency vehicles. And I, as the other board members will tell you, I'm not in favor of cutting down sizes of roads or restrictions because I've been there and done that when it comes to snow removal and been out there and know what these guys face when they have to try to find a place to create and put snow, especially looking at this, this plan that's in front of me here with all these units and the layout of the parking facilities areas. So from my position, I'm not, I'm not interested in allowing or creating any waiver for, for reduction in the setback or the road cartway widening, cartway of what our engineer has explained to you.
Well, the cartway, the cartway is in compliance. The cartway with complies with the ordinance. It's the, it's a right-of-way that's being applied to a private road versus a public road.
Yes, and, and our engineer has instructed you of what?
The engineer believes that the right-of-way requirement applies, but the cartway is not going to change. The cartway is, is in compliance with the ordinance.
Carolyn, I do think, hi Carolyn, by the way.
Hi.
How you doing? I think he grasped the concept.
Okay.
And, yeah, I think he grasped the concept and what he's saying is he's not in favor of a variance or a waiver that would make the driveways smaller and bigger setback, longer driveway.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
I agree with Jay. I, I don't want to see that to be too small. It could cause a danger, as Jay mentioned.
And I have, my feeling is I have read the township engineer's report, and the fact that it's a private road, it could become a public road at some point. So given everything that I've read and what I understand, I am also in agreement with Mr. Miller and with Mr. Kaiser. Solicitor, I think you have your answer.
Yeah, if I could add, the, the way the ordinance sets it up, the driveway would be in the vicinity of 30, 37 feet long, which is way more than is necessary for a truck, as Jay was mentioning. Is there a lesser dimension that you would be comfortable with than the, than the 37 feet? And something more than, what we're proposing 20 at this point?
I think we're not going to use this time in this meeting to debate this. You've, your, your time limit is up. You, you have options that you can explore.
Yeah, if I can add to that, maybe explore them with the planning commission and come back with a recommendation from the planning commission. The board respects their recommendations and opinions. If there's something between what you're proposing and what's required that would not draw opposition at a zoning hearing, maybe the planning commission can ferret that out with you.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much to the board. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, moving on, we are going to move on to the committee reports. The first one would be the planning commission report. Chairman, Mr. Chris Durstein. Is Mr. Durstein here this evening?
Saw him earlier.
I saw him a minute ago.
Is he on mute?
Hello?
Yeah.
There he is.
I'm trying to use my phone. And can you hear that? All right, I'm off my phone. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
Hang on. All right, one last time. Can you hear me and can I hear you?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. I was trying to use my phone and something was not working. I have bad connectivity out here in my office and my shop for these meetings, so I was trying to use my phone. Anyway, we'll see if I get through it. So planning commission met last week. We had two applicants and one other matter of business. The first applicant was Moser Construction. So they're proposing a two lot subdivision on an eight-acre track on Augustine Road, one lot being two-ish acres and the other being six acres. Both lots would have onsite sewer and water. And the property is located in the RA District. Now, I'm sure you guys all remember the, that this property was cleared back in the early 2000s. It was completely clear-cut and they received a notice of violation. They went to zoning hearing and zoning hearing stood on the side of the township with this violation, said the, the property can only be used, 40% could only be used to be cleared and the rest would have to remain forested. So from that time, reforestation efforts were made somewhat successfully in some areas of the property. The applicant was in, in 2017 with a very similar plan to what we saw last week. It had a couple of items that caused the plan to be denied. They have cleared up those items apparently and are back in with this subdivision. All right, did I go out again?
No.
All right. My screen flashed. So they, they have a couple of issues with this lot. One of them, Steve had pointed out that they have four point some acres worth of conserved land on this property, and they have their secondary septic site for Lot Two, I believe, the larger lot on this conserved property. A septic system would most likely require some vegetation removal, and it raised the question of what would be allowed on the, on this easement. The, another question came from the applicant as to what they could actually use this property, this easement part of the property, what uses they could have on it. They're not proposing any buildings, but they wondered if they can possibly make some pasture land or have horses or whatnot. And it was a question that, that the planning commission could not answer and would really like some more input. We were concerned about any, any decisions that might have come along with that zoning hearing decision back when the, you know, the land was clear-cut. So we, we suggested that township staff and, and Moser's people and our solicitor get together and discuss what that property, that portion of the property, what uses could be used on that property, I should say. Especially a secondary septic area. And they're, you know, they're very concerned about what a potential buyer would be interested in using on, on that property or using that property for. So they want to get that cleared up. We want to get it cleared up. So they were going to try to get together with the folks that I mentioned. Another problem they have is with water runoff. They have a neighbor to the north who is uphill from them, who they apparently get a lot of water from. They have a neighbor to the south who they pass that water on to. They, they claim that they've had water issues ever since the property was clear-cut. And that neighbor had subsequently hired their own engineer to follow the progress of this project. So again, PC is suggesting that the engineers of these, at least two of these properties get together and hopefully get together with the property to the north to see if they can hash out a way to deal with the, the water issues that are, that are coming across all these properties. So that being said, we decided to table this until we get more information back from these two meetings that we're proposing they have. So that was it for Moser, at least for now. Do you have any questions on that project?
David Collingwood here. I was in the meeting and I'm fine with what you've given so far.
Yeah, same for me, Chris. This is Jim.
I don't have any questions.
You know, Jay, if you would attend my planning commission meetings, I probably wouldn't have to give a report.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you something. I was, I was on the planning commission and when this, when this applicant came forward and I walked that property when, when it was cleared, and there was hardly any trees that were of sizable value. The water, as you asked there about water problems, water flows downhill, always has and always will. So, so, so there is, there is, there is a bunch of history with this, with this piece of property. This lady wanted to, wanted to create a horse farm back then when she wanted to, and she was denied. So I would say at this time, I'll just, we'll, we'll leave it at where you're at with it, this present moment. Okay?
Good enough. All right, second applicant was Beagle Sketch Plan. He is proposing to construct two 4,959 square foot storage buildings on the property that now contains an oil repair facility on Ridge Road in the, in the VC District. It's the, the old Montai Garage right down the road from the township building. He does, it sounds like he does a lot of classic muscle car restoration in that building. He has a second building that he had constructed a few years ago that he got zoning relief from because it was non-conforming. And these two new buildings will be non-conforming as well. It is a non-conforming business which really restricts how big an addition or building he can construct on the property. And it's much less than what he's proposing. So he's got to go to zoning hearing for relief for these buildings. So we're going to wait. PC was, seemed comfortable enough to say, yeah, zoning hearing, zoning hearing board gives it to you. We'll probably recommend it as well, but we have to see, wait and see what they come back with. There's a little bit more of that plan, but that's, you know.
Like we lost Chris.
Yep.
All right, how much of that one did you hear?
We heard almost to the end. I think.
Yeah. Did we, did I get to the part where planning commission basically told the applicant that if they got through zoning hearing, we would probably recommend the project?
Yes.
Okay, well, that was that for that, that project. Do you have any questions on that?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the third item, it's about the sewer extension along Ridge Road. Pen Ridge Regional, or Percival Regional Authority is proposing a 3,850-foot eight-inch sewer, eight-inch pipe sewer extension from the police building out to the area of Mountain View Road. This is all part of the Act 537. It would, would serve approximately 29 homes. Some of these homes have failing systems. Some have already have holding tanks. So there was some, I guess, some red tape, some confusion, since this plan did not show an actual line where the, where the service will, will go or be. The P-P-A-D-P required an update to the 537 plan. So Anderson Engineering had, had prepared an Act 537 special sewage planning study, which we reviewed at our meeting, and we are recommending the approval. Steve, if you have any more input on this, they, they might be interested in hearing an engineering, if you'd want it.
He's going to speak to that during his, his report.
Oh, he is. Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, there it is. I didn't even see that. I'm sorry. All right, yeah, so he can clean that up a little bit for me.
Right.
So that was all we had, and that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them. If not, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Durstein. Any questions from the Board of Supervisors?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, so with that said, may I have a motion in a second to approve the planning commission report?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. The planning commission report is approved. We'll move on to partner. Mr. David Rice.
All right, I hope everybody's doing well. It is almost in July. We're rolling a month away from our upcoming event, which is a movie in the park. Saturday evening, it's going to be around dusk. It's going to be Wonder Park. That's going to be coming up there. Hopefully a big, successful movie in the park evening up at James Memorial. It should be a great evening. I'm crossing the fingers, toes, eyes, and ears and hoping it's going to be rain-free and it's going to be a beautiful night. Rotary and Galco are going to be sponsors for that evening. And then we have after that September Fest, which is a new, actually, it's a 26th or 27th year, I believe we have, actually, we missed last year, so 26th year. We have, this year, we're going to actually entertain and have food trucks there. So it's going to be a pretty cool event. We're going to have Rita's Water Ice, the petty train rides, magician pony rides, fire trucks, whole big day of good things events for the community from 12 to 5. Should be a great day. There was a request that came in for, we always have tables set up and we always have, along the one walking path, we have one request came in for publications to be handed out, information to be handed out. I should say not publication, but information to be handed out in regards to the compressor station. So they had requested to the park and rec and we had seen no reason to deny it. It's going to be information in regards to the compressor station and what it does and the different things about that. So I was reaching out to the Board of Supervisors to request that it is okay, that we say okay to the persons that are requesting that table to hand out that information. It's not political. It's apolitical. It's just information in regards to the compressor station.
I have no problem with that, Dave.
Okay. Okay. I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Rice, do we have a, a copy of what that handout is going to be?
Uh, I don't have it, but I can probably get a hold of it. I'm sure I can get a hold of it. It's just a matter of, I don't, I wasn't thinking I was.
I, I honestly don't really have a problem with a, a table being set up, but I would like to see what we're approving before we say we can go ahead with it.
Okay.
This is Cliff Cole, we allow public comment. I'm over.
Excuse me. If we approved it in August, it would still be the end time for September Fest, which is the twenty-sixth.
Correct. I agree. Yep. I, I think Cliff was gonna try and say something.
But, but yeah, he is not, he's not being, uh, recognized right now.
Correct. Okay.
Nice and public comment. This is your, your floor.
Okay. Yep. Thanks. Thanks, David. Um, and then, um, one other item. Um, curious in regards to, since, uh, the parking rec is back in the township building, we do see, um, the glass cases were enamored by that. But, uh, we're also curious, um, this is the third time I'm actually requesting when the parking rec is actually gonna have, um, access to one of those glass cases, uh, for the parking rec so we can put some of our, um, buttons and flags and stuff like that that we have acquired from like the Veterans Memorial Dedication Ceremony and some of those things. So just curious if we had a timeline in regards to that, since we haven't been back there. I think this is the third month. Um, so just one of those things. I think that is the end of my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions or comments for the board of supervisors?
I would just like to say that, uh, go ahead, Jay.
Nope. I'll go after you, Jim. Go ahead.
Okay. I was just gonna say that, uh, I agree with Dave that we need to give him a date when one of those cabinets is gonna be cleared out. And, um, I'd like to get to take care of that right away. Uh, we've had more than enough time to, to look into that.
Thank you.
I was gonna, I was gonna concur that same sentiment. Uh, I know that this is at least two years, probably three years since the request was made. Um, and I would like to see something done relatively sooner than later.
Agreed. Anything else?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Um, that being said, I would look for a motion to approve the park and rec report.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
The parking rec report is approved. Thank you, Mr. Rice. We'll move on to the commission reports. We'll start with, uh, Chief Dickerson, please report.
Uh, good evening, uh, supervisors. Uh, I have the report for, uh, July of twenty twenty-one. Yeah, we do have the right one there, I think. Um, yeah, these are the report. This is the crime activity for the Penridge Regional Police Department for the month of June, twenty twenty-one. Um, we responded to eight hundred and ninety calls for service. Of those calls, three hundred and fifty-eight of them were in East Rock Hill Township. Five hundred and thirty-two of them were in West Rock Hill Township. Um, we handled twenty traffic crashes during the month of June. Uh, nine of those crashes were in East Rock Hill and the other, the remaining eleven were in West Rock Hill Township. Eleven were reportable and nine were non-reportable crashes. Um, criminal activity for the Penridge Regional Police Department, uh, we had six part one crimes and thirty-nine part two crimes. Um, totaling forty-five total crimes reported. Uh, part one crimes are your more serious index crimes or your violent crimes. Part two crimes are most likely your property crimes, uh, burger, um, thefts, things of that nature. Um, East Rock Hill reported crimes for the month of June, um, one assault, two thefts, a fraud, criminal mischief, one sexual offense, one DUI, disorderly conduct, um, an arrest for contempt, harassment, trespassing, and we had five ordinance violations. Um, two were for fireworks, two for dogs running loose and one was a soliciting complaint. Uh, crimes for West Rock Hill, three, three thefts, three frauds, one flim flam report, uh, two criminal mischiefs, three narcotics, one public drunkenness, three calls of disorderly conduct, um, one harassment, terroristic threats, trespassing and our ordinance violations, um, was one for fireworks and two for dogs running at, running at large. Um, yearly calls for the year, uh, four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine, total traffic accidents, one hundred and twenty-four, yearly offenses, one hundred and eighty-five, and our yearly criminal charges for the year filed is forty-nine. Um, last part of the report here, I gotta bring it up on my phone. Um, so criminal charges filed for the month of June, oh, there it is. Thank you, Greg. Um, institution of vandalism charge, one charge was filed, two charges of criminal mischief, two charges of disorderly conduct, one PFA violation arrest, um, two arrests for simple assault, one terroristic, terroristic threats charge, two harassment charges, three theft charges, one receiving stolen, I'm sorry, two receiving stolen property and one possession of drug paraphernalia. Um, other police activities for the month of June was two hundred and seventy-seven traffic enforcement details and fifty-five of those details were on Al Bethon Pike. We issued forty-five citations and fifty-one written warnings and we also conducted seven hundred and three business checks in the month of June. And that is your July Police Commission Report.
Thank you, um, chief. Any, uh, comment for supervisors?
I have none.
I have none. I have one. Um, chief, how was the, uh, how did the blood drive go?
Uh, blood drive went well. I believe, um, the goal was for twenty-eight pints of blood and I believe we received thirty-two. Um, what I can do is I'll send an email out to the, uh, supervisors, um, to give you the exact numbers. I actually don't have them here in front of me. Um, but it exceeded the, uh, the goal for the event.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, uh, let's, uh, have a motion in a second to approve the, the police report as, uh, read.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Mr. Miller, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the police report is approved. We'll move on to the joint rec authority report. Mr. Miller.
Uh, Holiday House Pool's having a very good year. Um, as you all know, Quaker Town Pool's shut down and Knock and Mixon Pool's shut down, so everybody's been coming to Holiday House. Um, we have already equaled our projected goal for revenue this year and we're only halfway through the season. So I think we're gonna have a good year. Um, we were seeing a lot of, of rentals come in now, uh, people having birthday parties and things like that. Um, the, uh, swim team has been very good to have with the pool, the Quaker Town Swim Team. They, uh, they, uh, they'll finish up this Thursday, I'm sorry, this Friday. And then starting Monday, the Penridge High School Aquatics Team will be coming in because their pool's in renovation. So they'll be coming in and, uh, and using the pool before hours for practices. And they'll be using the same, uh, the same payment fee that the, uh, the swim team had. So it's actually the same, uh, same swim manager runs both programs. So worked out very well. Um, we've been working with Menlo because they've been having some issues and, uh, and we've been trying to help them out with, with personnel and stuff and, uh, and some of their parties that they, they were unable to hold. So, uh, I think, uh, we've got a good relationship with them and I really want to keep it up. In addition to that, uh, the zip line has been a, a huge treat for everyone, as Tony mentioned earlier, when he went down it. Um, um, also, um, I wanted to mention that, uh, this coming, not this, not tomorrow night, but the following week, uh, July twenty-ninth, we're having our chill out on a hot night event. Uh, there'll be swimming, there'll be bocce ball, uh, ping pong, uh, all kinds of games. Uh, we'll have our music on, the lights will be on in the pool. Proper brewing will be there with probably four or five different types of brews that you can purchase. And, um, we're having, uh, Big Guys Hot, uh, yeah, Mr. Big's Hot Dogs. Uh, I'm sorry, Big Guys Hot Dogs, that's his name. His name is Bill Buckley. He's actually a Pen, Penridge grad and he used to swim in Holiday House Pool. His, his vending service is gonna provide hot dogs with all kinds of toppings, hamburgers, uh, nachos and cheese, snacks, soda, water and kielbasa. Uh, and he's gonna work with proper brewing to come up with the, uh, the sauces for kielbasa. So, uh, it's gonna be a fun night. It's five dollars to get in and then you make all your purchases right from the vendors. So as I mentioned, it'll be, uh, September twenty-ninth, which is next Thursday from seven thirty until ten PM. I've invited all of our off-duty police officers and chief. I also invited all the off, off-duty police officers from, from Percy. So at the Sellersville meeting, I know that some of the.
That might have been a bad move there, Jim. I said that might have been a bad move there, Jim.
I know that, uh, I know some of the borough councils coming out from Sellersville and I know that, uh, uh, we've also passed it along to the borough council in Percy, so I think some of them might be attending and their staff too. So I think it'll be a fun community evening and I hope, I hope a lot of you can make it out. Um, except for that, I don't have anything else to talk about tonight. Uh, like I said, everything's been going really well, no complaints. And, uh, we seem to be doing quite well. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any comments by Mr. Kaiser?
Nope, I have no comments. Good job. Um, I, I will, I would make a motion to approve this, uh, report as presented.
Thank you, and I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close. The, uh, park and rec report is, uh, excuse me, the joint rec authority report is approved. Okay, we move on to the tax collectors' report. Uh, Mr. Lippincott, you're taking care of that this evening, correct?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your, uh, packet is the tax collectors' report. The total collected for June is fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
That's it?
Uh, the bills, uh, went out at the, uh, are due at the, went out at the end of June. So those state taxes don't start coming in until July. So yes, very little was collected this month. Next month will be better.
Okay. Uh, if there's no comments or questions by the board, I'll make a motion to accept the tax collectors' report as presented. I'll need a second. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the tax collectors' report is approved. Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. We'll move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Balla.
Sorry, had to get my mic off. Thank you very much. Um, so the item we have on, under my report is the Ridge Road Sanitary Sewer Extension, which, um, Chris Durstein discussed a little bit under the planning commission report. And, uh, the board is familiar with the project. We've been talking to Percy Regional Authority for months or even a year or more regarding the, uh, sewer extension that they proposed. Generally, it's an extension from, let's say, from the police station, uh, west to, uh, I might draw a blank on the road there. It's not Meeting House, it's.
Mountain View.
Mountain View, yeah. Mountain View Road. So that, that's the, the scope of the current project construction. Uh, when they went to DEP for their final nod of approval for the project, DEP threw a little, threw a little wrench in the, in the works and said, uh, we want you to, we want West Rock Hill Township to amend their five thirty-seven plan to address the connection of these properties, even though this area was already included in the designated service area for Percy Regional Authority. Uh, after, uh, a meeting and a lot of phone calls and emails with DEP, we, we boiled it down to, uh, DEP allowing us to have this special sewage planning study. That's what, um, PRA prepared. That's what, that's what's in your packet. So this study is strictly for the area of Ridge Road and it includes a little bit more than the, the initial project. Um, the initial project, as I said, was from the police station to Mountain View Road. This project area includes, uh, if potential extension to the three oh nine bypass. And, uh, shaded in on that, on the plan that goes with the special study area is all the properties adjoining Ridge Road, which could be connected. But as we've discussed in the past, there is not a mandatory connection at this point for these properties. So this study area will, uh, address the future extension to the bypass if and when that happens and the future connection to any of these properties along, uh, Ridge Road to the, uh, to the new sewer line. Uh, DEP also asked for the study to be, um, submitted to Bucks County Planning Commission, Township Planning Commission and a thirty-day public notice provided in the, uh, published in the newspaper. So PRA has, has submitted to those agencies and, and the, uh, newspaper notice. Uh, we have a letter back from Bucks County Planning Commission saying they have no objection to the proposed extension. It was discussed last week at the Township Planning Commission, which Chris reported, uh, was in favor of the project.
Correct.
And to, to my knowledge, Greg could confirm, we have received no written public comment, uh, from the newspaper publication. So we've, we've met the, the threshold that DEP had asked for as far as getting public comment. Uh, so at this point, what the township would need to do is adopt a resolution simply stating that the Act five thirty-seven special sewage planning study for Ridge Road Sanitary Sewer Extension is adopted to amend the township's Act five thirty-seven plan. That's, that's what's before you tonight. Um, before I just ramble on anymore on this, is there any specific questions about the study that was presented?
I have one, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
Um, Steve, I went to the meeting that, uh, PRA had out there, um, and they had said that there was no mandatory connection that, that, that people have to. Did, has anything changed as far as do they have any, a, a number of, how many people have committed to hook up out of the twenty-nine homes that are, that are there?
I don't have any updated information, uh, from what they had presented to the board before. I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but there was some percentage of, of the existing residents in that area that indicated an interest in connecting right away.
Yes, there, there was some, yes. I just want to make sure that the township is, um, that the residents are, are not, uh, made aware that if, if this goes through and this is built, that, uh, regardless of what they may have been told about not having to hook up, if they live within a hundred and fifty feet of the, of the sewer line, they have to hook up. Is that correct?
Um, well, if they live within a hundred and fifty feet of the sewer line, the health department could require them to connect, which typically only happens if they have a problem with their existing septic system.
Correct, which is what the reason was to put this line out there originally.
Right, just quite a few properties that have that, yes.
Failing systems, yes. So I, 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 I want to go on record saying that the, the public, the citizens along that road should be aware of what they have to do if this, not if, but when this line is completed. So that's, I just wanted to make the point that if this line is put in and the health department deems they have a failing system, they are gonna have to replace it. They're gonna have to, uh, hook up to this public sewer.
That would be correct.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Uh, so, Mr. Balla, um, all three criteria have been met. The Bucks County Planning Commission, our planning commission, the thirty-day, um, newspaper ad. Uh, so we are not looking, even though the, our planning commission has approved the revised five thirty-seven plan, we are not looking for a motion to approve the, the revised plan. We're actually looking for a resolution to, or adopt a resolution, correct?
Yes, DEP will want it as, in the form of a resolution.
Alright, and do we have that resolution this evening or is that something we would have to wait for and for our solicitor and have for the August meeting?
Um, unfortunately, I don't have that because that was a last-minute thing that I was, uh, trying to work out, uh, with PRA. Um, as, as I indicated, I think it, it's as simple as just stating what I, what I did, you know, a resolution to adopt a special study area to amend the township Act five thirty-seven plan. If you're comfortable enough to approve that at this point and we could provide you with the, the final paperwork, so not, so as not to delay the project further.
Any comments from the, uh, rest of the board?
I'm okay with it. I have no comments.
I understand it and I'm okay with it, uh, as Mr. Balla has published or presented it. Um, Mr. Kaiser, do you have any comments?
Well, I.
I mean, I know you have, your, your comments. I mean, I know you have, your, your comments are on record, yes.
My, my comments are on record, and, uh, you know, I do have some concerns, and I'm not, I don't understand why we're in a rush to, uh, to, to push something through like this. However, I, I do know that there is a need for, for, uh, fixing failing systems along Ridge Road. I just wish that all the residents were, were, uh, made aware of what's actually happening. Regardless, I also believe that most of us know why this line's being put in, and it is not just for Ridge Road, as Steve explained. Uh, I do believe that there's going to be a need and a wish to, to get it under the 309 to connect the village area. However, we will let that play out and see how it goes. This, this plan that was presented was to, to approve the study and the, uh, uh, update the study of the Act 537. So that being said, I, I think township's in a position to, uh, allow it to move forward.
So then I would ask the supervisor if they're in favor of the process as presented by Mr. Balla tonight to uh, adopt the resolution, but have the final paperwork signed at a later time. Uh, would you signify by saying aye? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Opposed? Then we would say that it's, resolution is good to go. Um, did, any comments from our solicitor or Mr. Balla?
Yeah, I, if we could make clear for the minutes that the action of the board tonight was to authorize the signing of that resolution, I think, isn't, Steve, was that what you were asking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, it's clear, there's no resolution coming in August. The board, in a, in effect, adopted the resolution tonight, and, um, the chairman can sign it tomorrow.
That's fine.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we all understood what happened.
Right, so that, that would be number twenty twenty-one dash oh six, based on the general?
Correct. Correct.
And that's all I have for my report tonight, unless there's any other questions.
Any other comments or questions? If not, um, I'll make a motion to approve the engineers' report, and I'll look for a second.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. The engineers' report is approved. We'll move on to, uh, the solicitor reports. Sir Everly?
Hi, um, the Schlosser Farm Approval Resolution is being tabled, or there's a request from the applicant to table this for another month. So if the board's so inclined to do that, they could do it by a motion and a second?
To accept?
To, to table the Schlosser-
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, and I'll second. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. There you have it, solicitor.
Thank you. And following up on Mr. Cole's request, at the last meeting, we reported that the Commonwealth Court ruled in the township and the McCarthy and the Coles, in, in three separate actions, favor in the, in the appeal from the refusal of the environmental hearing board to hear everyone's appeal from the issuance of the, the clean air permit by DEP. In the normal course of events, you would expect that Adelphia would file a petition for allowance of appeal to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. That's where you go to appeal from a Commonwealth Court decision. Adelphia did do that, and, and understand that maybe the Supreme Court hears, maybe one in ten of petitions for allowance of appeal that come before it, and it usually takes about a year to get a decision from the Supreme Court as to whether they're going to hear your appeal or not. The Adelphia did file that petition for allowance of appeal, and, um, your attorneys, Doug Blasey, et al., are working on a response to that petition for allowance of appeal. But in the meantime, Adelphia has opened the war on another front by filing a petition for a permanent and preliminary injunction in the Middle District of Pennsylvania, asking that there be, uh, an inju, um, temporary injunction or a stay, another word for injunction is a stay, a stay of the hearings before the environmental hearing board that were ordered by the Commonwealth Court. And also that jurisdiction be taken in this matter from the Commonwealth Court, from the Pennsylvania State Court system, and go to the federal court system because FERC is the one who issues the permit, and pursuant to Adelphia's argument, since FERC issues the permits, all matters, all regulatory matters following that should be heard in federal court. Our attorneys, your attorneys, Cole's attorneys, McCarthy's attorneys disagree with that. And right now, there's a lot of discussion among the three attorneys as to, you know, how to best manage this in an expeditious and financially responsible manner. So we're still talking about that. I want to have an executive session after the meeting to talk about those issues with you. I won't go into any further detail than that. At the public meeting, everything I just told you is a matter of public record. But, and I, I believe the, um, judge in the federal court action has issued a preliminary order, and there is a teleconference coming up, and we can talk a little bit more about the strategy with regard to the teleconference and what position we're to take regarding different matters, but, um, Mr. Cole asked for an update on the procedural status, and that's it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is that it for the solicitor's report?
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the board supervisors?
I have none.
I have none, and I'd make a motion to approve the solicitor's report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Solicitor's report is approved. Thank you, Solicitor Everly. Um, moving on to the Township Managers' Report. Mr. Lippincott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the newsletter mailing. If you recall, back in spring, we had some difficulty with the spring newsletter. It got sent out bulk to the eighteen hundred plus residents and landowners of the township, but it got put into a box down in the Philadelphia Distribution Center and did not make it out for months. Um, it caused a delay in our spring newsletter. We talked with our mailing person, Promotions by Mail, and they suggested an alternate method by sending it out by mail carrier route, which would avoid it going down to Philadelphia and possibly getting lost in the distribution center. The difference is, is currently we mail out to eighteen hundred residents and, and landowners. However, using this alternative method, it would be by the mail route, so you'll get people in Quakertown, people in Green Lane, people in Sellersville. You will go outside of your boundaries with your mail list, and that will jump the mail count up to four thousand six hundred and forty-one households, which would increase your postage by eight hundred and sixty dollars. But then there would not be a, a threat of it being delayed. So I'm looking for the board's input on what it could be.
First of all, I am extremely disappointed in what happened in the spring. I, I received my newsletter, I think, three weeks ago, that was mailed out back then. Uh, it's ridiculous. I mean, everything that was in that newsletter was old news. We, we learned all about the events that were going to occur in the township three months ago. I'm just, I'm at a loss for words for that, first of all. Second of all, I'm not in favor of paying postage for sending it out to people in every neighboring town, township and, and borough around us just because it's going out by a mail route, so I don't know what we're going to do at this point. I just want to hear what the others have to say.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Okay, thank you. We all know how the, the mail has been over the pandemic and everything. I have, I had bills that I didn't get for months after they were already due. Uh, I, I received the Lancaster farming paper every week. It's supposed to be here on Saturday. I had some, some papers that weren't delivered for two and three months. After, they're old news. Now, if you're following the markets or you're, you're looking at, at what animals are bringing, or hay, or anything like that, you, 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 you can't even, you lose on it, and you've already paid for your, your subscription ahead of time, so it, it wasn't just the, you know, it isn't just the, uh, the newsletter for the township, it's everything in everybody's household that, that relies on the mail system because people didn't go to work and the mail didn't get moved. So, uh, I'm not in favor of sending and spending more money to mail, mailings to, uh, other towns and boroughs. So, uh, I would say, from my perspective, we either stick with the, with the same system that we have, or we, we discontinue the, uh, we don't do the, the, uh, spring, or the fall newsletter this year.
My feeling is, um, for what it's worth, is, um, I agree that sending it to forty-six hundred people, that we really don't even care about two-thirds of them getting our newsletter and the additional cost. I, I don't want to see us give up on the fall newsletter because it's important, not only for September Fest, but for, for a lot of other reasons, and I would think that we've, this system has worked except for this spring. Historically, we really haven't had an issue with it, and I would like to at least give it one more shot, um, and do the Philadelphia Distribution Center one more time, and just see if it's, if it's repeatable, and if it is, then we do have to figure out what to do with it. What's my thoughts?
Do we have an option other than the Philadelphia Distribution Center?
We do.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, all right.
So I'm, my, my, uh, position would be to try it one more time with the Philadelphia Distribution Center and see what happens.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I, I would too. I mean, I, I, I don't know that anything's happened to change the way the mail's going out, but I do know that the mail I have been getting lately seems to be coming in in a reasonable amount of time, so.
And I believe, uh, Mr. Lippincott, our, our, our newsletter is online, it's available to people with, with that, with computers, and it also, there's hard copies at the township building, correct?
Sure, when we get the hard copies, as soon as it's mailed out, so there's always hard copies at the township building, and I do post it online so people can print it out.
All right, so, um, Mr. Lippincott, do you need anything else? I think you have three people that agree that we-
I have the board's direction. I'm good.
Thank you. Next.
The next item is in your packet, is a contract for auditing services for the American Recovery Plan. Um, it is for eleven thousand five hundred dollars. It will cover, uh, three years of the American Recovery Plan. That is the money that we are getting from the federal government. This eleven thousand five hundred dollars will not come out of tax, not come out of West Rock Hill Tax Fund dollars. You can spend the American Recovery Act for this auditing services. They'll help guide the township through the three years of the American Recovery Plan, and I would highly recommend the township sign the contract.
I, in my opinion, I, I agree. Um, I think, I think we need this service, just to keep us on track and make sure we're doing all the right things.
I would agree.
Uh, David Collingwood, I definitely agree. I think that, uh, these people are pretty well qualified. I mean, they're, they're providing this service to a lot of other people in the, in, in the state of Pennsylvania, and I just think it's the right thing to do. So, uh, again, Mr. Lippincott, I think you have the, the direction you need, correct?
Correct. I will sign the contract.
Anything else, Mr. Lippincott?
That's all I have.
Great. Any, uh, comments or questions by the board of supervisors?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, I will, uh, make a motion to approve the Township Managers' Report. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Township Manager Report is approved as presented. Uh, we will now move on to old business. Any, uh, anyone have any old business they would discuss?
I have none.
I have none.
I have a question for Mr. Lippincott. Um, without going into any detail and identifying, do, do we have any, have we had any response to the Conservation Committee, uh, open position?
Yes, we got one email about six o'clock tonight.
Okay.
And I'll forward that to the board and to the Conservation Committee.
So we're moving in the right direction. Thank you very much. Any other, uh, old business? Uh, how about new business? Moving on to new business.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. But that will move on to public comments. You have two and a half minutes. If you wish to make a public comment, please state your name and address.
There was two people who did want to make public comment. The first was, uh, Tony Bogner.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm a little confused here. On the September Fest-
Mr. Bogner, would you know your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Climber Avenue, twenty-nine twenty.
Thank you.
On the September Fest, uh, in Dave's report, the table, um, to set up, did I hear correctly that you wanted to see the literature that was to be handed out? Was that correct?
That's what I asked for.
Okay, all right, because, I mean, uh, typically, has, have, has the board ever done that before?
Has the board ever done what? Allowed people to pass things out, or has to see it ahead of time?
No, ahead, like, ahead of time or whatever, because, um, I mean, I'm sure it can be furnished to the board, but I just was wondering if that was typically how it was done, because I, I've never seen it done like that before, that's all.
Okay, well-
I, I don't remember ever having in it, and I could just not be remembering correctly, but I don't remember ever having, like, a special interest group have a table at September Fest.
The reason why I brought that up is because I remember there was this discussion some years ago with Naceville Quarry, and that came up, and, um, there was some literature to be handed out with the quarry expansion and stuff like that, but I don't, you know, I, I just, I, I thought it was odd. That's my point, and I didn't know if that, maybe some rules have changed or something like that.
I don't know that any rules have changed, and, you know, there's always First Amendment issues, Tony, and if, you know, but if you're going to participate in a township-sponsored event, then the township- Oh, I'm sorry, the, the township can have input into, um, what kind of information is being handed out as part of that township-sponsored event. For example, the township may not want anyone soliciting for funds, and they may want to check the literature to make sure that, that it's not, somebody's not using that event as a fund drive. Just, just like little things like that. I, I, it's not a, a self-standing gathering of people or something where, where, we would necessarily, um, be concerned with monitoring what they say.
It just seemed like it was a censorship issue. That's all I'm bringing up, and, you know, to, it's, to, you know, for, you know, for the board to be able to state whether or not a certain piece of literature could be handed out, you know, at September Fest, it just seemed like- Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bogner. Are there any other public comments?
Cliff Cole also emailed about a public comment.
Yes, I'm online. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my first comment is the-
Will you need your address?
Twenty-four forty Shucraft Road.
And you have two and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my, my first comment is the Police Chief Dickinson. I would just like to comment that, uh, I was going down Allentown Road, um, where the, there's a truck van between, uh, five sixty-three and, uh, you know, the Twin Churches and whatnot. And another truck from JBS Beef was, uh, going through there. In fact, it had a big comet trail of cars, and, um, can you please? And, um, it, uh, was actually creating a disturbance. Uh, your predecessor, Chief Blake, had, uh, given them a warning about this. I'm not sure exactly when, but I'm sure somebody could look it up in the notes. So I'd just like, uh, if that could possibly be, uh, taken care of, they should not be driving their trucks- their trucks along there. I'd also like to mention that, and this is sort of ties in with what Tony's saying, our group, the Citizens for Clean Air, we are the ones that requested a table at the September Fest event. We are having a fundraiser. We will not be doing any fundraising at September Fest. That's not our goal. Our goal is to get just our our neighbors to understand what's going on and what we are doing about the this big monstrous air polluter that Adelphia wants to put in into our neighborhood. But we are having a fundraiser on August 7th at the Country Creek Winery in Telford, August 7th from 12 to 4:00, and we invite all the supervisors and any of the staff that come out to that event. It will be fun. It will be at a winery, and we'll have music, and we hope that you will come. And my third comment is to the solicitor of the township, and I very much appreciate your very eloquent description of what's going on in the case, and we continue to collaborate with the township on this on this case. In our opinion, this has no place in federal court. This is purely a state issue. It's the DEP, Pennsylvania DEP, and the Pennsylvania Environmental Hearing Board. So we don't believe that this injunction or possible injunction has any bearing, but I guess we'll find out whether that's true or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Are there any other public comments?
There are none emailed to me.
All right. Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll second it.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. The meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.